Seven o'clock.
It's seven, it's seven o'clock.
Let's start with the pledge allegiance, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Go call. Kramer. Ridley.
Here.
Belazosik.
Here.
Vance.
Here.
Riedma.
Here.
Public comment on agenda items. Is there a public comment? I would like to request that we add something to the agenda. I'm not here, so. I would ask that we add the dates of the special meetings to the agenda. It would be, it could be an aim, it doesn't matter where you put it in. Put it down. Is there?
I'll support that.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. No public comment on the agenda items? Pardon me? You're right. There are no agendas out here.
Mike?
Yes?
I think there's a conflict. The women's club had the meeting room.
I saw that, yeah. Twenty seconds, we'll talk about that, but the women's club is.
I can't wait. Nobody checked the calendar.
Would you like a quick pause? We make copies for everybody, or how do you want to do this?
Oh, the internet.
Excuse me for one minute.
She wasn't here for that. She was not here for that. I'm serious.
I'm sorry.
Well, that forty-eight hour meeting thing, I would have known to throw it out the internet. You read it at the little last minute. I was signing up for surgery. I live here, I'm a voter. I'm a landowner. I know what's going on. I'm done.
We sure if you can.
You can watch it now. Got it. In glasses and no cape. Okay.
Please get one back to the corner there if you.
Yes, I sure will. Hope you got some, okay?
Is there any more public comment on the, yes? Hold on for a second. So, it is. Right of order. Let's keep the chatter down, please.
Okay, I noticed that there's a section of for elections in there, and I think it needs to be revisited because the only person that's allowed to register voters is the clerk or the deputy clerk if the clerk is not available. And then the only people who are allowed to make decisions with their election inspectors or employees is without your permission, which is Jay yourself and five.
Correct.
That needs to be revisited.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any more public comment on the agenda items? Okay, the public comment is closed. Number four is called Roberts Rule of Order, and we're moving with it.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we follow Roberts Rule of Order at all regular and special board meetings. So that's my motion.
I'd like to subject that.
Thank you.
Is there a discussion, debate?
Yeah, the discussion normally happens in our meetings before the motion. And I'd like to switch it so that we know kind of like what we're discussing. Because that makes it a little bit more focused, and we're not like all over the place, and then coming up with a motion at the last minute. Kind of like, you know, the motion be done before we have a discussion if we can. So, basic Roberts Rule of Order is motion, the second, if you don't get a second, the motion fails. It doesn't, you know, reflect in the minutes if the motion fails. Then we restate the motion, then we vote, I mean discussion, and then we read the motion back again, then we vote. And so, it's just a basic thing. So, I would just like to start getting back to that. It's just, I made something just for the clerk and the deputy clerk to go by tonight to make sure that we kind of read back motions before we vote and things like that, so we know exactly what. Because sometimes the discussion gets muddled a little bit with the motion. So, that's all I'd like to do. So, I guess, I'll read back the motion I made, motion to follow Roberts Rule of Order at all regular and special board meetings.
Let's see, and we have a support, second from Jay.
Yeah, so I read it back, so now.
There's more motion on the floor, and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, it's accepted, they're moved.
Okay, another motion under Roberts Rule of Order. I'd like the board to authorize me to attend a workshop with expenses paid out of my trustee's education fund for a Roberts Rule of Order workshop on the, on November twenty-sixth. The cost is ninety-seven dollars in the workshops in Tottmabye.
Ninety-six dollars, is there support?
Ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven.
I second.
Second it. Any more discussion?
I would like to know about, so if you're going, you're going to be the only one to attend to the workshop, how will the rest of us? We've never used that for rules of order.
What can it be?
So how will the rest of us learn about it if you're the only one going?
Well, I can take notes, I can make, I can make a report and explain what I'm doing. I don't think it's necessary for everybody to go. If I can make a report and explain what I've learned at the class, I think that would be very helpful. So, I mean, it helps all of us learn more about conducting governments.
I don't believe that you have a budget as a trustee to attend education, so I wouldn't believe that you would need our, okay for you to attend. If I was going to go to the MTA meeting, I wouldn't need the board's approval, it's in my budget.
I think I do have an education fund in my trustee.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so you could choose to use that. So I just wonder why you would choose for just you.
I just wanted to be open about me going and why I'm going, and just make sure everybody's on the same page. So I'd just like everybody to know that I'm going. I know I don't absolutely have to have a move, but I'd like the board to move.
I would request that you would share the information with the rest of the board because some of us are familiar with Roberts Rules of Orders, but if we're going to use it and use it, we should use it appropriately.
I have a book, I have a, so we make a report. I think, I think that's important. And it's not necessary for all of us to go, so I think if I went, made a report, you know, a summary report of what I learned, I think it would be helpful for the entire board.
What was the date of that?
The twenty sixth of August, the Saturday after Thanksgiving. And you can register at the door.
At the township hall?
Mm-hmm, in Tottmabye.
We have a motion, and we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Let's move on to job descriptions. Is there anything else? Job descriptions?
I'd like a point of order before we start regarding the meeting. I would like Mr. Riedma, under MCL forty-one point seventy-two A. It states that three, a majority of the board can call a special meeting, which is what happened, the notice and the request are together on one form on the door. I'm not sure the technicality of that. But it also states that all members are to be personally contacted or written notice to be left at their residence. I'd like you to attest that you did that for the two board members that were not part of the three that set up the meetings, the six meetings.
The information was sent out to all board members.
Was I, so they were personally contacted, because I didn't receive a phone call.
I did not personally contact.
I sent, I sent an email to every board member.
Okay, but the law states personally contacted or written notice left at my address. An email is not sufficient notice.
Okay.
Under MCL forty-one point seventy-two A.
We'll take note of that. And we will fix that. Thank you for bringing that to our townships.
What was the job description? We're moving on to job descriptions.
Township of Excellence is the next.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry, yes, you're right, Township of Excellence.
Yeah. Okay, Township of Excellence. I would like to make a motion to accept the Township, Tuscarawtownship Board Manual and Administrative Policies, Chapter one through three, as written with one amendment in Chapter two point two-one, and we will, and I will come back when we get there.
This is board. This is board administrative policy.
Yes.
Can you repeat the motion again, Shannon?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to accept the Tuscaraw Township Board Manual and Administrative Policies, Chapter one through three, as written with one amendment in Chapter two point two-one, which I will discuss later.
I'll second that.
Discussion, debate, is this the process we just debate, or we adopt these one?
These are the policies right here. Okay, just to get started. Couple months ago, the board voted five to zero to go forward with the MEDC program as well as the Township of Excellence program. And trustee Kramer and myself have been working on this to incorporate with the MEDC program that you've been working on for about four months. We're just trying to get the policies that are similar, or the same, or the requirements to coordinate with each other, and also to make sure that we are fulfilling both needs at the same time as much as possible. This is not everything that either program is requiring, but it is the ones that are similar. So, I'd like to start with the summary. And I'll be reading this, so everybody can hear what we're doing, so buckle up, it's a long night. The citizens of Tuscaraw Township deserve to know how their elected officials will meet their fiduciary responsibility with transparency and accountability. This document will provide all township policies in one place as a reference for township board members, members of the boards, commissions, task forces, township employees, volunteers, and the public. Quote, "Townships are led not by an executive, but by a board elected by and accountable to township citizens who live in the community they serve. It's the perfect example of neighbors leading neighbors of government closest to the people." Unquote, by the Michigan Township Association. Unlike other forms of government, there is no executive branch. The township is run solely by the Board of Trustees, referred to by Michigan law as the legislative body. Other than the duties required by law, a township supervisor, clerk, treasurer, or trustee has no executive power to act for the township unless the board, as the legislative body, directs that official to do so. This means the power and the responsibility of any one member of the board is limited and is either established by statute or assigned by the entire Board of Trustees. The policies in this document explain the responsibilities and roles of elected officials and employees and offer guidelines to ensure understanding of those responsibilities. This is a living document that is subject to change as best practices and other requirements evolve. The majority of these policies were modified from templates from the Michigan Township Association Policy Matters Book, documents from the Association Township of Excellence Program checklist, policies from townships who have won the Township of Excellence award, and recent policies enacted by the Tuscaraw Township Board of Trustees. So, now in Chapter one point zero. The purpose, one point one, purpose. These, this policies manual is adopted to provide for efficient and uniform application of policies and procedures in Tuscaraw Township where such procedures have not been provided for by law. Are there any questions as we're going through this? Please just speak up. Okay, two point O, Township Board, we're in Chapter two already. Two point one, Township Board Authority. The Township Board is empowered by the Michigan Constitution and state laws to govern Tuscaraw Township. The Township Board has the exclusive authority, subject to applicable laws, to determine the scope, quality, and quantity of township programs and services, to establish parameters and expectation of the employee performance and conduct, to establish its own style of governance, and to require information from township personnel necessary and convenient to monitor township operations and compliance with board policies and directives. The Township Board may authorize appointed officials and employees to take such actions and make decisions that are consistent with applicable federal and state laws, local ordinance, and township board policies. Two point two, Township Board Authority is exercised by the board. Township Board Authority shall be exercised only through official board decisions recorded as votes taken, directives given, or consensus established by the Township Board at a Township Board meeting. No individual, committee, or organization, so, shall represent its authority or action in a matter as that of the Township Board unless the Township Board has directed the individual committee or organization in writing or resolution to act on the Township Board's behalf in that matter. Two point three, allocation of resources. The Township Board shall allocate the township resources through the annual adoption of the township budget and periodic budget amendments. The board shall authorize the resources necessary to fulfill the township's mission as required by law and defined in the goals identified in Township Strategic Plan. Two point four, budgeting for results and outcomes. The Township Board shall budget for results and outcomes by linking strategic planning, long-range financial planning, performance measures, budgeting, and evaluation. The use of resources shall be linked to objectives established or reaffirmed at the beginning of the budget development process. The Township Board shall routinely monitor, evaluate, adjust budget allocations to align township resources with strategic plan goals and objectives. Two point five, strategic planning, of which we do not have a strategic plan, but we must work on one. The Township Board shall focus its administrative and budgetary deliberation at a strategic level through the adoption and updating of a strategic plan to provide long-range direction over five years. The strategic, the strategic plan shall, all boards, commissions, department heads, committees, citizen task forces, and general public through public hearings, shall be queried and contribute to the development of or updates to the strategic plan. Define long-term outcomes that the Township Board wishes to achieve. Facilitate introduction of new programs or services in a logical, rational manner. Link program objectives to resource development, be adjusted annually for changes in environment, and be reviewed as part of the budget process to align township resources with strategic plan goals and objectives. Evaluation, evaluating programs and services. The Township Board shall establish, monitor, and evaluate measurable objectives in the strategic plan that defines when success has been achieved. The Township Board shall use surveys, forms, benchmarking, customer satisfaction surveys, complaint reporting, direct solicitation of stakeholder views and opinions, internal reviews, et cetera, to evaluate the township's program and services. Township Board and department heads together will develop performance metrics for every department. We okay so far?
I got a question.
Yes.
Mike, in MEDC, is there a requirement for a strategic plan? I think the strategic plan, or is it capital improvements?
Well, that too, that's in there. Master plan.
I think it's strategic plan.
Yeah, the master plan is in there.
John, Sean, first, John. Is the, in the master plan, is there a strategic plan in the master plan?
There is a reference to one, and some of them I've read out of what they're requiring, you know?
Yeah, okay.
I just wondered if we did a strategic plan with that punch some of your buttons.
Yes, that's, yeah, that's the, takes the point with this, yeah.
Okay, any other question?
No.
Two point six, evaluating programs and services. Township Board shall, did I read that one yet? Oh, I don't think so. Yes, I did.
Yes.
Okay, we're on two point seven, excuse me. Board consultants. The Township Board reserves to itself the authority to appoint specialized consultants. A letter of agreement and/or contract will be executed between the board and any consultant that identifies the, one, term and length of the agreement, two, services to be provided, three, payment method for the retainer, hourly or by project, four, payment schedule, five, documentation of services provided for payment, details to be included in the statements, six, method of resolving disputes, seven, township officials, employees authorized to direct work or assign tasks to consultant, and eight, terms of termination. Note, all such contracts shall not go beyond the current regular term of the elected board trustees. The Township Board cannot create an employment contract that binds a future board, such as an assessor, attorney, fire, or police chief. See City of Hazel Park versus Potter, one-six-nine, Michigan. In the, I'm just going to skip over to the MTA book, Policy Matters, page eighteen. So, does everybody understand that?
So you're saying that every four years, someone's employment is subject to being dissolved?
What this law says.
It's not a law.
It's not a law, it's a, it's case.
Legal precedent.
Legal precedent. What this says is we cannot make a contract that goes like eight years forward, or six years forward. It has to end at our term, because if all of us were replaced, we cannot tell another board how they have to act. That's what it's, it's not me, it's not me.
It is not law, though, like you just said, it's not law.
It's precedent, it's precedent. It's what there is, what they're suggesting. It, we can go by this, we cannot go by this, it's just, this is a precedent.
It's not a law.
How are you ever going to have any employee loyalty if that's how you, I mean, if you hire someone that every time a board changes, we've had this discussion.
Hey, you probably have to.
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
We're not talking about employees, is that correct?
It's under the board consultant section.
Yeah, binds a future board, such as an assessor, attorney, fire, or police chief. We're naming, those are our employees. This isn't our consultant.
This was in the Policy Matters book.
But it's, so, so it would probably, I would guess, be a policy that someone created, and then they violated it. Not a law that is on the book.
Well, this was a precedent, this is a legal precedent.
Did you read?
That note is word for word out of the book.
So no one understands it, though, what we're going to put it in?
I understand what it's saying, I may disagree with it, but I understand what it's saying.
This basically says that if we have a personal contract with the police chief, ask the head.
Doesn't mean that new board can't reinstate it.
But you're saying that's a legal precedent, not a law.
No, it's not a law, it says, see City of Hazel.
So if it's not a law, then we're setting policy based on a legal precedent that is not a law.
I said we can go by it, or we cannot go by it, it's just in there, I wanted to bring it to everybody's attention.
Right, but you put it in.
It says, no, it says no.
If you're just, note, so, all such contracts shall not, so you're saying these contracts won't go beyond that? It's a note, it's, we're signing this.
I'm sorry, I'm still confused here. Where does it say employees? It says consultant, specialized consultants.
Well, assessor and the police chief are employees.
That is true.
And an attorney is, would be a contract, but we have contracts with them generally ongoing.
I'm just saying that this was something that I thought was important enough to bring to the board to at least have the discussion over whether we wanted to include this or not. We do not have to, I'm just saying, I thought it was important. It raised, like red flags with me when I read that, I thought this was important enough to bring to the attention of the board, that's why it says note on there, because I wanted everybody to be aware of that.
So, but I don't understand, I guess, this is my confusion, what this note pertains to. It pertains to some legal documentation in here, which goes back to the fact that in the beginning we said the majority of these policies were modified from templates from the Michigan Township Association. So we took a legal document that someone says, hey, here's one good legal document, and I'm assuming you, or we, tweaked it to say what you want it to say here, and you're presenting it. So we're not taking a, an attorney-approved or an MTA-approved document and looking at it. We're taking a modified template.
If we were going to do word for word, this policy book, just this half, would be over a hundred and ten pages. Of course, we modified it down, we're a smaller township, we don't need to have a whole chapter on fire protection and things like that, because it doesn't apply to it. There's certain things in there that didn't really apply to us. It may apply later date, and we can go back and get it, but at this time, that is what we did. We went through, just like anything else we would do, we would just take it as written. You have to make sure that it fits our township to a certain point. But I thought this particular thing.
That's why we're going through this with you now, so you can read these.
Well, it's my question, go ahead, Bobby.
We, who's we?
Bob and I.
So my question is, we, are we, tonight, are we approving this? Or is this something that we're going to scratch our way through like this, and then turn over to the attorney and say we want this?
This is not, this does not have to be attorney-approved, because every one of these sections have already been approved.
But you said modified here.
Yeah, because some of these sections, we took, we didn't have to necessarily have every section that's in the book. Each section has been okayed by the attorney, by the MTA.
Chapter one was a stage and a half.
Right, but not being an attorney, how do you know that what you took out doesn't affect what you left?
Because each one of these sections are independent. Perhaps.
Are you an attorney? Because I'm not an attorney.
So Bobby, is there a, is there a solution to your dilemma with the way this reads? Is there something you would rather see it say?
I would just like, because it's a lengthy document, and we're reading it, and we're taking up all the people's time by reading it to them, is when there's a note in here, some, whoever drafted this document feels confident enough that it doesn't have to go to an attorney for review, that they can tell me what this note means, and so it note. What is it, does it pertain to one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight? Does it pertain to two point ten, two point seven?
It doesn't have to pertain to any, and we don't want to go.
But what do you have it pertaining to as a note?
I have it pertaining to the board of consultants, right there, the board consultant, the board consultants, that these contracts shall not, or may not, however we want to interpret it, it does say shall not, go beyond the right, current regular term of the elected board of trustees. I thought that was important enough to bring to the board for their attention, so they can discuss it. Whether we want to go by that particular thing or not, it's up to us.
I think you just, you said board consultants up here, you're talking about attorneys, auditors, you're talking about people that we hire specifically, engineers.
Right, but then we throw in assessor.
But we throw that out, I think we scratch that out.
That's my question, that is my question. So can, can you come up with an alternate phraseology if you want to use that phrase? Except.
Now, if, do we have a, do we have an employment contract with a chief?
Yes, we do.
Well, I think then, the question would be, if we have an employment contract with a police chief, or a fire chief, or assessor, we probably have to have that looked at by a lawyer anyway. And let me ask him that question.
Yeah, that affects his policy.
So, so we hire, we hire an assessor, and we give him an employment contract. I'm assuming a lawyer would look that over, and ask him that question. Are we, by this precedent, are we limited to not going beyond 2024?
Well, we will be, I think, if we set policy in this document.
I guess what I'm saying is, it's possible that if I add. I guess what I'm saying is, it's possible that if I ask a lawyer that question, he's gonna say, yes, you can't go beyond twenty twenty-four. That's why you ask the question, right?
Nice, so, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't-
I, I think, I think it just refers to board consultants, I don't think, it, it says, these are, like I said, our assessor and our police chief are, are employees. So, all, all employees, every four years, subject to, and do a contract or do you-
So, we take the note out and there's not any other language that I'm missing in here that says that, that binds us to say that we only sign contracts that are limited to the term of the current board. Is there, you're gonna guarantee me that there's no language in here that I'm not understanding or missing, because I don't understand this note.
I would have liked to seen what that referred to.
Right, that's what I'm saying is-
Referred to a fire chief or a referred to-
It, it doesn't make sense, and so the fact that it's there, it's drawing a red flag to there's some language-
That's why I put it in there.
To draw a red flag?
So, you would see it.
But what does it pertain to, Tom, Bob? I don't, that's what I'm asking, is, it's a note-
This, this note is word for word from the book that was under paragraph.
But it doesn't make sense.
And I put it-
So, I feel like there's something missing or-
I, I put it in there, I asked it to be put in, so, we would see where this takes us, because it was alarming, it was new news to me. Because, you know, we have some contracts with the engineer that we had to have through USDA, correct? Am I right, Mike?
Yes, we have, we have-
That'll be on twenty twenty-four.
So, I think, I think we should, um, have the section-
You, you can, you can X that whole thing out, but if we send an employment contract forward, I'm gonna be asking that question.
Yeah, I think that needs to be, that's, that's one thing I think we need to talk to attorney about, because I would, I would like to know what that referred to.
You, you can take that whole note out of there, but in the future, if we look at any employment contract or any employee, that's the first question I'm gonna ask. Is that limited to twenty twenty-four?
But, and the two of you drafted this document, so you're pretty much experts at it and you probably could have said-
Well, we try, we're not lawyers.
You could say something, you know, I could say something and you'd know what page. I've had the document for less than eight hours to review and try to understand. So, I would, would like you to tell me that you take this note out, this note pertains to nothing in this document, it really means nothing, and I'm not going to-
I don't know if it means nothing, I just say that if we took that note out, um, I don't know, I don't think it pertains to anything else in the document.
It's not gonna affect the rest of the document, that's your question.
So, you left a note in that doesn't pertain to the document?
Two point seven, it does. Just two point seven. It's talking about, it's talking about all of these, this, right here, our board consultants.
Right.
That's what it's talking about. And those are the, uh, uh, employment agreements.
Again, I think it refers to consultants, not employees.
I think so.
But it-
Let's take, what, is that down here?
But if-
You're, you're not adversely affecting the document by taking it.
No, you're not adversely, and we could, we can even have the board attorney, uh, check that out to, to double check and make sure, I have no problem with that.
We don't even need to check that until we get ready to do another contract.
Right, right.
My understanding is that, that is a flag that we should think about when we make a contract with an employee like the police chief, like the assessor, like any place else where we do have a contract, there's an, uh, they're, they're at will of course. So, we need to consider that when we do that, we don't need to have it in this document, but we should be considering that.
Can everybody hear back there?
No. All right, Mike, mine's on, I'm, I'm just asking that we consider that as a question to be asked when we create contracts with employees. You can take it out of this consultant package or this consultant-related item, but we should consider it with all future contracts.
Any other discussion? All right, let's move on.
One minute.
Yes?
You wanna take this out?
We just-
I don't have a problem taking it out, it was just a red flag anyway. Um, I think we just should take it under advisement there.
So, we'll take out the whole note, is that correct?
Yeah.
Right, before, two, something, two years.
All right.
You can paraphrase these rest of these, unless there's questions, the rest of these paragraphs.
Okay, has, has the board had a chance to look at a lot of this stuff too, because, I mean, I don't know if my voice is gonna hold out. Um, do we have any, any questions about contracts? Mostly it just says that, um, the supervisor has a statutory authority to sign a contract once the board approves and no oral contracts are authorized, that's pretty much what it says.
It says township board may authorize or direct the clerk.
Right, exactly.
If you're not around.
We're correct, yeah.
All right, um. Let's see here, let's, let's read this one. Um, property. The township board resolution adopted by a majority of the board members serving is required for the township to acquire property for public purposes by purchase, gift, condemnation, lease, construction or otherwise, or to convey or lose township-owned property, or any private township-owned property not needed for public purposes. In the case of donations of equipment and facilities, the board will encourage the donor to include an endowment to cover estimates of future maintenance expenses. Any questions on that? No? Um, two twelve, stewardship. Township board delegates to township officials and employees the responsibility to oversee the township assets through such means that include insurance, which includes its land buildings and property, pretty cut and dry there. Two thirteen, litigation. Um, pretty much, this is what we're already following. The initiation of any lawsuit litigation claim for injunctive relief, writ of mandamus or other legal proceeding requires majority vote of township board, except when there is extenuating circumstances. The township board is authorized to remedy the circumstances as defined in this section. Extenuating circumstances are defined as an emergency situation that cannot wait until a special or regular medium of the board, or a situation which is a violation of any state, federal or local ordinance constitutes a danger to public, in which the con, the continued existence of such a condition, emergency or violation detrimental to the health, safety or welfare of the township. Extenuating circumstances also include any situation where the continued existence of any condition, emergency or violation may jeopardize the legal position of the township in securing the intended remedy in any lawsuit litigation claim, writ of mandamus or other legal proceeding. Township board reserves the authority to authorize and direct the course in conduct of any lawsuit, et cetera. Um, all board members must be immediately informed of any pending or current litigation, and this includes all lawsuits and tax tribunal cases. Any questions so far? No? Board administration. Uh, board policies and procedures shall define what the township is to accomplish, board policy, through the adoption, excuse me, of, of admission statement, strategic plan and other adopted policies and procedures in compliance with applicable laws. Board policies and procedures shall also define the manner in which the board shall conduct its business, the relationship of the board to the township officials and employees, and limitations on the action of township officials and employees. Direction and control of the administration is two fifteen. To promote efficient administration, the township board may authorize by resolution a board member, administrative assistant or other individual to provide direction and control over all township activities and functions that are not assigned by state law to another official. Township board meetings, two sixteen.
I have a question about that one.
Yes.
So, township board may authorize by resolution a board member, administrative assistant or other individual to provide direction and control over all township activities and functions-
That are not assigned by state law to another official, so it's non-statutory functions, is what it is. So, if, let's just say-
So, we want Mike Ridley to, uh, uh, work on a project and he agrees. It's non-statutory.
So, we're gonna have to have a resolution for that?
I didn't say that.
Yeah, it does. So, we're not gonna appoint someone, we're gonna have a resolution for that?
Yeah, for, uh, to acquire.
I think you're correct, I think you're correct, we're already doing that with the budget, for example. It's Mike's statutory duty to do the budget, but it was assigned to the clerk by resolution. Yeah, well, in essence, it was through the, uh-
A, a resolution is a, is not a resolution, it's not an appointment.
You did make a resolution to approve the, the budget.
To approve it, but not for someone else to work on it.
So, would you like to change that by resolution or, or, um, majority vote? Would that be better?
It's required for the township to acquire property.
And I don't like the word all, provide direction and, and control over all township activities and functions, I mean, three people on this board could agree that they want Sue Fisher to be in charge of everything that's not statutory, and then you could take every function of the township that is not my statutory duty, Mike's statutory duty or Jay's statutory duty, and give her control over all activity and function of that. That's, that's a lot.
What, what is-
So, do I need to eliminate the word all and replace it with something else?
Eliminate two point fifteen would be my recommendation. There's, there's no, no need for that, that does nothing, a lot. Eliminate two point fifteen.
I thought the-
No, I, I wouldn't go for that, I'd take the word all out of there.
So, you're gonna provide direction and control over township activities and functions? Yeah, there's no difference there.
There's a big difference, it's a difference between all and some activity.
About designated township activities.
I like that.
But you could designate all.
You could.
Well, you could, there's nothing to stop us from doing it now.
Probably, it depends on who, who's doing it, we got to-
Actually, there's nothing to stop us from doing that now, if we wanted to, we could still do it. It's just, this is just, just putting in, in writing what the limitations are, so if you want to make it unlimited, we can. Um, I have no problem with that. To authorize by resolution or majority vote of the board, a board member, administrative assistant or other individual to provide direction and control over designated township activities and functions that are not assigned by state law to another official.
It's just changing the word, all and designated, I could designate all, I could designate some.
Yes, you could.
You could, there's nothing to stop us from doing it now, we could do that right now without this written down.
I don't, I don't know that you could legally.
Well, certainly you could, but, but it would not be, it would not be wise to do that.
I don't think you could legally. I, strike her.
Do we, do we already designate certain township, uh, activities to certain employees and, and?
Yep, but not by resolution and not direction and control over activities and functions. It's, it is everything that this township is, except for statutory duties outlined in the resolution. That is the, that is the function of the township.
Of course.
Yeah, you, that could allow someone to take over parks somehow, I mean, that is, that is just a dangerous thing to give some, to give power like that, to, to designate control and over something. I, I can't even imagine where that would come from.
I don't have a problem with it, yeah. No, I don't have a problem with the way it is.
I think you eliminate the word all, you basically designate it.
So, why are you saying, Bob, that you would like to have it?
Please keep the chatter down, please, we don't need comments, please.
If we need to take a break, we can take a break.
Let's just get through this.
So, are you saying, Bob, that by resolution or majority vote of the board, and then, and replace all with designated township activities, or what, what are you saying?
Just take, you take the word all out. Or you could use, not designate.
Designate, yeah, I think designate would be specific.
That would be like a quality activity.
Clarification.
Okay, let's move on. All right.
Well, wait a minute, what are we saying?
Um, right now, it looks like it's to promote efficient administration, the township board may authorize by resolution of a majority vote of the board, a board member, administrative assistant or other individual to provide direction and control over designated township activities and functions that are not assigned by the town, by state law to another official. That's what it was.
Okay.
All right. Two sixteen, board meeting notices. The township clerk and, or his or her designate is responsible for all regular, special and rescheduled township work when the notice requirements in performance with Open Meeting Act and other state laws. Two seventeen, regular board meeting agenda. The township supervisor and the administrative assistant shall prepare and distribute the agenda and board packet at least four days prior to every township board member. Board member agenda items. Business items intended for board action shall be placed in the agenda by the board member by notifying the supervisor and the administrative assistant at least six days prior to the meeting. As an example, if a regular meeting is scheduled for a Tuesday, items are due to the supervisor and administrative assistant by the previous Wednesday at five P M. closer to this day, the board packet will then be posted and distributed by five P M. on Friday. Department heads and the planning commission, the parks commission, library, police department, Saxon, airport and downtown development authority. Those requesting to have any business placed on the proposed agenda shall notify the supervisor and the administrative assistant with a cover memo supporting documentation at least six days prior to the township board meeting. The cover sheet to be used will be, it, will be in a specific format in accordance with the form attached as tab two A. Board members, department heads, the planning commission, the parks commission, library, police department, Saxon, airport or downtown development authority who wish to bring an issue to the board's attention but are not seeking board action, shall bring up such issues under one of the report sections in the consent agenda at the meeting in accordance with paragraph two point one nine below, using the report format of, at tab two B. Sounds a little complicated, but it's a lot easier when it's signed. A copy of the proposed agenda shall be delivered or made available to every board member along with all supporting documentation and correspondence addressed to township board at least four days prior to the meeting. This would be known as the board packet. Each board packet will also be published in the township website at the same time. That means it'd be open to the public. When we get it, y'all get it. Board package should be in chronological order and placed in one P D M. file. Paperless board meetings, to the greatest extent possible, board meeting packets should be paperless. Board members may download the board packet from the webpage or from email to the laptop, tablet or electronic reader device provided by the township, which we have not done that yet, but that is the suggestion to go. When we need to place an item on the agenda arises before, after the deadline, the business item may be added to the agenda by majority vote of the board at the meeting. The proposed agenda shall be approved by majority vote following the roll call of the board members, and each board member in the agenda shall conform to the following format.
And be, be, before we go there?
Mm-hmm.
Business item may be added to the agenda, oh, okay, so, as an example, we find out that we have an issue with a statute. And we found out this morning, he found out this morning. He can place that on the agenda right then and there.
Absolutely.
Just, just the same thing with my question about the dates today. You, you, yesterday was about the, uh-
Yeah, okay, got it, all right.
So-
Nobody's being handstrung for all this.
No, no, but what is happening is that the, the board trustees will get their, their packs in, in advance to have time to look at, what that's providing. So, one, it would be called to order, two, pledge to flag, three, roll call, four, board member conflict of interest statement if applicable, five, public comment on agenda items, six, approval of consent agenda, seven, approval of meeting agenda, eight, old business, new, nine, new business, ten, public comments, eleven, board comments and twelve, adjournment. So, now we're into board correspondence, two eighteen. Board members shall receive with the pack, the board packet, a copy of any written or electronic correspondence that was addressed to the board requesting board action at a regularly scheduled meeting. A motion may be made to consider the correspondence request under new business. If no motion is made to consider the request, the correspondence will be received and filed. Informational written correspondence that does not require board action shall be summarized on the consent agenda. Informational written correspondence that does not require board action shall be summarized on the consent agenda as correspondence received and copies shall be available to board members at the board meeting. No correspondence should be read into the minutes unless board action is required. Okay, now we're on two nineteen, consent agenda. Now, just to give you a little update on that, the county already goes by consent agenda. Am I right, John? Where's John? John Wallace?
I, I hear that, that you really shouldn't be bothering with the audience right now. You have.
Yeah, well, I just want to make sure we were, we were all on the same page because this is getting a little drug out. And I want to make sure everybody understood what a consent agenda was. Consent agenda items may include approval of previous minutes, executive reports, and meeting reports provided for information only. Correspondence requiring no action, project status report, staff and facility, um, updates, membership and program updates, et cetera, that require no discussion. Items requiring a decision that is not expected to need any discussion or debate may be placed on the agenda under consent agenda. All materials and items proposed in the consent agenda shall be clearly identified as such in the meeting packets. All board members must receive, preview the consent agenda items prior to the meeting. Upon the request of any board member, an item shall be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda under new business. When items are placed under the heading consent agenda, the following must occur. A motion must be made to approve or reject the agenda, and the motion to approve the agenda must be worded motion to approve consent agenda. The consent agenda will include reports from departments, commissions, boards, task forces, at a minimum. Each report shall contain the following: a summary, financial impact, recommendation if any, and reports will use the format provided at tab two B. The following reports will be provided every me, um, board meeting. Treasurers' report, bills, police report, D V A. report, minutes, library report, sewer report, Parks Commission report, and minutes, Planning Commission report, airport report, cemetery report, accessory report, toy report, and citizen task force reports, and minutes.
But the, excuse me, the treasures report and the bills, that, there's no cover sheet required. It's just basically what we al, what we already get from Bobby and the clerk.
Exactly.
And, and they just go in there so we can approve them all at once.
Right, yeah.
Jan, could, uh, could that summary or financial impact or recommendation, any of that, could that just include the park minutes? Park, uh, I mean, library minutes? We're telling them to provide something that I'm not sure that, you're talking about every, this is something every month they have to provide?
Well, if there's no report that is re, put out, if they don't have anything to report, they can just say, no report. But we need to at least, at least know that there was, that they received this and they came back with us and no. Let's say the planning commission, they only meet normally four times a year. Monthly, they don't have to report the same thing over and over again because they haven't had a new meeting. They just say, no meeting and, and no report required.
We'll all know that.
Hmm?
We will all know that.
Yeah. That's all. Bob, you want to explain a little bit of the consent agenda so they get, because you're a little bit more up on that than I am?
It's just going to save us twenty to thirty-five minutes every meeting.
Speak up.
It's going to save us twenty to thirty-five minutes or longer every meeting. And since we're going to get all this stuff thoroughly, um, especially some of your stuff that's hard for me to understand when I ask you questions. I got it all in front of me. I got my questions written down. He says, is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Yeah, Bobby, I didn't understand that. Could you explain it to him? I'm, I'm ready to go. Same way with the bills. And then we get down to the business faster, that's all.
Right, and so if there is board action required, let's say, um, that Schofield asked for, um, was going to ask for something. He would ask for it in advance so we would know what he was asking for.
That wouldn't be in consent agenda.
No.
That would be a separate.
That would be separate. He wouldn't ask that in the consent agenda.
So, uh, uh, the chief's, uh, the, the chief's report may just be the thing that he, he gives us anyway. Do you get that? That's perfectly suffice, but if he wants to come to the board and say, look, I need five thousand dollars for the body cans, that can't be in the consent agenda.
So how are the bills in the consent agenda since we approved the bills?
We see them ahead of time because it's written in.
We see them all ahead of time.
In our packet.
So when we approve the consent agenda, we're approving the payment of the bills.
We're approving your, your report and the bills.
The payment of the bills and that, that meets auditor requirements?
Yes. Okay.
Some of these townships consent agendas, a hundred fifty pages.
Two point two oh, board member conflict of interest. Township board member shall vote upon all matters that require a vote of the township board unless the board member has a conflict of interest. If township board member has a conflict of interest regarding a matter on which the township board is required to vote, the board member will disclose that interest and the township board member shall recuse him or herself in voting on the matter. Two point two one, public participation. Members of the public shall have an opportunity under public comment on agenda items to address the board for no more than three minutes on an agenda item. Members of the public shall have the opportunity under public comment at the end of the meeting to address the board on any matter for no more than three minutes. Persons shall be recognized by the supervisor or meeting moderator. Members of the public will not interrupt board discussions or deliberations for any reason. The supervisor is responsible for maintaining the order. Public comment is not a question and answer, period. It provides individuals with an opportunity to express their comments regarding any subject matter. All comments shall be directed only to the presiding member of the township board, normally the supervisor. No person may address or question board members individually. Now, I'd like to change the next sentence a little bit. It says in this that the board will not respond to comments made during public comment, period, unless it becomes necessary to ask for a clarifying question, correct a factual error, or provide specific factual information. I would like to change it to the board is not required to respond at that time. That's fine.
That's fine. Say it again.
I, I wanted to change that the board is not required to respond at that time.
Okay.
Instead of will not respond. All right, the presiding member of the township board may interrupt, warn, or terminate an individual's presentation when the presentation exceeds three minutes or is personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irru, irru. Request that any individual leave the meeting when that individual fails to observe reasonable decorum. Request the assistance of law enforcement officers in the removal of a disorderly individual when that individual's contact interferes with the orderly progress of the meeting. And call for a recess or adjournment until orders restored, which is.
Can I make a comment here? You passed a policy in twenty thirteen. You, you passed a policy similar to this in twenty thirteen, but it was really, really long. And this from the M T A. covered everything in your policy, but it was shorter. Much shorter and, and more clear. I just want to put that out there. Now, if you want, I can try and find it. I, I, I have a similar system and you will find it. And we can schedule.
Nice to be right over.
So is this going to supersede any policies we already have?
This one, yeah.
This negates anything that's already said adopted?
Yeah, we only got one more page to read after this. Unless we're going to read the Code of Ethics. We could do that, but there's no changes made.
Go ahead.
Two point two two, minutes. The clerk shall ensure the minutes of the board meetings record time, date, and place of the meeting, board members present and absent, decisions made by the board at a meeting open to the public, roll call votes taken at the meeting, and the purpose or purposes of which a closed session is held. In addition to the minutes contents listed above that are required by the Michigan Open Meeting Act, the minutes shall list persons who address the board under general public comment, period, and the topic of their remarks. The clerk shall ask those making public comment for their name to enter into the record. The content of minutes shall reflect the collective will of the township board as expressed in official board decisions. Minutes shall not include personal comments or opinions of individuals unless authorized by two-thirds vote of the township board members present. Appointments. Two point two three.
Excuse me?
Yes.
I interrupt?
Yep.
Um, we were trying to cut this down because paragraph two was quite long. And we cut a lot of stuff out that was already obvious, like a description of the law. Well, if it's in a law, we already know what it says, right? So we tried to cut it down. I tried to take this entire appointment policy out. However, I want to bring this to your attention. If you go back in the M E D C. thing, because we're trying to tell all these birds with one stone, right? So, so if, if you go to your R R C. and you look at the status four point one and four point two and four point three and some of these others, that's why I went ahead and put it back in when I started trying to, you know, make sure that whatever we did here fits us with some of your M E D C. requirements. So with the four point one, M E D C. says, the community has a clear recruitment and appointment process, recommended action, develop a board commission application and post online. Expectations, and that's in here. Four point two, uh, four point three is in there. So with this one paragraph, we're, we're knocking out four one, four two, and four three. But here's my question for you. If we enact this, at what point does M E D C., do they come back and inspect us or something?
Yeah, there's, it's called a treble board, and you post what you've accomplished, and they, they double check.
And that's that training you went to, right?
No, this is something totally different. They give you a board that shows your progress.
Okay.
We showed what we've done, and I have a discussion with the man down in Lansing about this.
So, so this will happen, right?
Yes, it will.
So you, yeah, they don't come back and see us? They, they do it all online?
Most of us online. They come up, talk to us, but it's online.
So pretty much they'll review our progress as we go along.
All right, well, before we go into four, since we're on four four, this says bylaws, boards, and commissions. Would, would you just go online and then you do the same thing?
Yeah, just, I'll, how do I, how do I do this with, this, this is what we've passed.
Like, I know the planning commission just redid their bylaws. Do you have to upload those or do you just check them all?
I, we don't know the answer to that. I'm uploading my laws. I do not.
Okay.
I know you, you do upload stuff, so I don't know if it's.
Okay, got it.
Okay, any other discussion? Can we move on?
On appointment policy?
Appointment policy. All applications for appointments to boards, commissions, citizen task forces, and or committees that the board of trustees shall have authority to make shall be submitted to all board members and voted on by, upon by the board at a scheduled board of trustees meeting. A board member may nominate an individual at any time. By state statute, the planning commission, if established in accordance with law, and the downtown development authority members are appointed by the township, township supervisor with the township board of trustees approval. Notice, sixty days prior to any committee expiration date, a notice of intended vacancy will be posted by the clerk on the township website. Board members will be advised as well. The notice shall include description of function, membership requirements, any per diem paid, term of appointment, method of appointment, application instruction, and due date materials, dates of instruction, excuse me, dates of introduction, opportunities, date the appointment is expected to be made, and where to find more information, i.e. website address, phone number, contact name, et cetera. Application. Interested individuals will be directed to complete an application for appointment which can be downloaded off the website or obtained from the township office. Application submission. All applications will be submitted to the clerk no later than two weeks prior to the date of voting thereon. As agenda items, ten days prior to the meeting. The cutoff date will be specified on each posting. Applicants must include any required documentation per statute and may include non-mandatory items such as a resume, letter of intent, or letter of reference. And then it gives address where to send everything.
Okay.
Application procedure. All applications received by the township will be distributed to all board members after the deadline of posting has been met and will be included in the board of trustees' agenda packet, which is publicly available.
Ten.
Mm-hmm.
Hey, can we do page sixteen? Application for appointment.
Yep.
To boards, commissions, committees, and citizen task forces.
Yep.
I got this from, what's whose township?
Shelby.
Shelby Township.
No.
Shelby County or?
This started with a C.
Pluton?
Pluton. So, um, the M T A.'s thing was really long.
Really.
Then I went to Spring Lakes, and I went to Delta because they won the award. But I found a, a shorter one on Pluton. So I cut and pasted that because it seemed to be easier, and I cut it down as much as I could cut down. So this is just a straw man. You can change this anytime you want, cut it eight, any way you want, but it does meet the M E D C. requirement.
Right.
This is just to start, for example, uh, one of the things that got, yeah, page two, education and activities. You know, uh, they had that big long list. I cut it down, and then I put optional, not required. You may want required and not optional. I just, I added that in there to try and make it as easy as possible for people to put their name in the ring. But I, what I'm saying is, you can change these two pages anytime you want, as long as it meets that M E D C. requirement. Sorry about that.
Yeah, okay.
I'm sorry.
It took, it kind of, that, that form kind of summarizes what, where you were at too.
Right. Okay, where was I at? Um, all application received by the township, I think I said that one. Okay, appointment. The nomination will be placed on the board of trustees' agenda. Applicants are welcome to attend the board of trustees' meeting, but their presence is not required. Prior to appointment, the clerk will compile a summary of the residential geographical location of current appointees. All candidates will be notified of the outcome via a letter, written, or electronic from the clerk. Supervisor appointments. Committee appointments that fall to the township supervisor by statute will also be posted, posted as a courtesy to all. Records. The clerk will coordinate and oversee the process of maintaining all records on committee appointments. Establishment of advisory city, citizen task force. Two point two four. Task force establishment and rules. The board of trustees, at its sole discretion, may establish by resolution an advisory citizen task force, citing the name of the task force, its purpose, term, meeting requirement to number proposed members. Such task force shall be, shall be at least five members, but that will not exceed seven members, one of which must be an ex officio member of the township board. Appointment terms shall not exceed three years. Citizens who serve on a task force shall not be a member of any other board, commission, or committee unless by majority vote of the board of trustees.
So this met the M E D C. requirement, and it was really long. And we worked, we worked really hard to cut this way back. In fact, chapter two is twenty-nine pages. We got it down to fourteen?
About that.
Maybe?
Thirteen.
Thirteen, including the attachments. Because, I mean, I, I, we've all seen the book. It's this freaking book. And Spring, Spring Lakes.
Yeah.
Spring Lakes Policy Book. Uh, I think I told you that that garrison manager is from River Springs.
Yeah, yeah.
And. He likes to talk. That thing is like two hundred, almost three hundred pages. Ooh, we're not a charter charter.
Right. So the approval, and that's the last paragraph. The policies included in this manual were approved as official policy of Tusker Township. All township officials and personnel are bound by these policies, and any deviation from established policy is prohibited. This policy supersedes all previous policies, implies, or threatens. So that's chapter one and two. Chapter three is our Code of Ethics that we have already passed and, you know, the same one we have right now, where there was no changes made to that. So I don't think it's sufficient to have to read that. May I ask two questions? Please can.
Um, first of all, I just want to be clear. So this application for appointment to boards, in a couple of places, it states that the state statute gives the authority to the township supervisor. And then, so he recommends who goes on, who fills that position, and then the board of trustees approves that.
Yeah.
So what committees, so this, this whole section would not apply to those two boards, planning commission and D V A.
Exactly.
What, so what committees, what boards would, does this apply to in the township?
If you establish an advisory group.
Advisory of. Advisory of, of any county.
So we currently have none.
We currently have.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Citizens Task Force, or that advisory committee put on either.
Yeah, we used to have one, that was sized one. It wasn't in by.
So this, this sentence, "By state statute, the Planning Commission, if established in accordance with the law, and the Downtown Development Authority members are appointed by township supervisor with the Township Board of Trustees' approval," covers the fact that this application has nothing to do with proposed.
That's why we left it. That's why we left it in there.
Okay, so that legally.
To make it clear.
You've established that.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have one.
I don't want to throw a monkey wrench in, but at some future date, we're going to have to talk about the planning commission and the way that we're established, because from all the homework that I'm getting, it's, it's, you called it an ad hoc.
It's not an ad hoc, it is a, which we have.
There's some planning that we have.
We're not, we don't have our own zoning, is the problem.
Right, yeah.
We are not, we're more advisory of the county, hoping that they don't, you know, we tell them what our plans are, and we're required to do that. We're required to have our.
And we didn't establish our planning commission by ordinance. We don't have a, we don't have an ordinance somewhere where we establish the planning commission by ordinance that I can find. Are you aware of any?
Please stop, please. Oh, well, you need to air.
No.
That, we have, yeah, we have some other ordinance, I.
I looked, I looked, I looked, searched, and searched, I couldn't find one. So, but we're good to wait.
I have a question about the Code of Ethics. At the last regular meeting, the board voted to have the Code of Ethics sent to the attorney for redrafting, but we are tonight looking at adopting the exact same Code of Ethics. Is there a reason why we're doing that?
Because we don't have a replacement yet.
We don't have to re adopt it, it's the same one, it's just, they require the Code of Ethics to be included. We have one, it's in this. If we amend it at a later date, we can amend it at a later date, once the lawyer looks at it. But because the Township of Excellence and the MEDC requires some kind of Code of Ethics, and we are already going by one.
It's word for word.
It's word for word. We included it, but just like in the personnel thing, we included, which we're not going to cover that today, but we included our hiring policy, the one that we had, because we required a hiring policy.
We added the good policy.
But this is a separate chapter, so why would we go ahead and adopt something that we've already adopted? So we're going to re-adopt something that we've already adopted, that we voted to change.
When we're all done, it will be in one policy.
Right, but tonight, we're not voting on the whole policy book, we're voting on.
Chapters one through three.
One through three, so why not one and two?
We can do that.
We can do that, I think.
But whatever's in chapter three is still in effect.
It is.
It is still in effect, but we voted to spend money to send it to the attorney. So should we not send it to the attorney?
Well, it should already been sent.
Right, but should we stop that process before we spend more money?
No, we're just, we're just.
Remember, this is a living document. You can change this anytime you want.
Right, but I'm just saying, it's odd to adopt, re-adopt something that's already adopted, I guess. Doesn't make sense, but that's okay.
And I don't think it makes any difference when we're.
I would, when we're, when we're all done, and we have a full policy book, I'd hate to not have that. Because remember, you can change any of this anytime you want. And I would appreciate it as we go along, especially those applications that was five pages that we kept to. If there's another way to streamline it, do it. Redline it. The shorter the better. It's the intent, not the number of words.
So we're voting today on passing one and two?
And three.
And three. Let's just pass it on, then whatever happens with the lawyer, we'll adjust, because we can change it any time.
But you have amendments, ma'am?
Yes, I wrote down the amendments here. So I'd like to amend my motion. Jay?
Yes.
Jan? I'd like to amend my motion to accept the Township, Tuscaraw Township Board Manual and Administrative Policies, Chapter one through three, as written, but with amendments that were agreed upon. And there was several small ones that, and I wrote them all down, so I will make those changes. So I guess I need another second.
One second motion.
Thank you.
Is there any more discussion? I have one, I'm still fogging on this, because I do have questions that I think I would like to put some explanation on.
Okay.
No, not, no, I'm talking about legal.
We can do that at any time.
Legal.
We can still bring that up at any time.
So we have a motion, we have a second.
You want?
Okay, real call. Kramer?
Yes.
Ridley?
No.
Lozeman?
No.
Lance?
Yes.
Richland?
Yes.
Motion passed. Now we move on to job descriptions.
Can we take a five-minute break, because we'll move on?
We need happy crowd. You know from experience.
You guys need a five-minute break, or are you good to go? Good to go? Oh, let's do it. All right. Job descriptions. Okay. Job descriptions. Motion to accept the office assistant, administrative assistant, and sexton job description as written, without election, this jobs involved in that until we see what the MCLs require.
I'm sorry, I was unclear on that. Will you say that?
Okay, motion to accept the office assistant, administrative assistant, and the sexton job description as written, with the amendment that we take out the election language until we see what the MCLs require.
I was not provided with a sexton job description?
You were not?
I was not.
Don't worry about that. Let me see if I've got it.
You're looking for that, I guess. I have a question, we've, now we're creating an additional job description. My calculations show that your, with what you have listed on here for an administrative assistant, would make thirty-one thousand, two hundred dollars a year, and your office assistant would make eighteen thousand, two hundred dollars a year. Is there a plan for funding these positions? And I guess talk about the overlap in the two, and the fact that the administrative assistant appears to be supervised by the township clerk, and the language in there makes that person appear to be the clerk's personal assistant. The job description for the office assistant, they don't report to anyone, and they again answer, in most cases, if there's anything talked about, it's the clerk. So is this establishing any office assistants for general things that you can assign to designated people by resolution? Is there going to be another person that does that? Or are these people going to assist the supervisor and the treasurer? Is there equal? It doesn't, it doesn't really add up, I guess.
Okay. Well, what I'd like to change is that the office assistant works under the supervision of the township clerk instead of the township Board of Trustees.
Right now, they operate under the direction of the supervisor.
Exactly.
So what's, what's the reasoning? What's the reasoning for the change?
Because I think the clerk works hand in hand with the office assistant, and will work, if we get an office, administrative assistant, will work hand in hand with that. And I think that most of the duties that they will be doing will be under the clerk's umbrella, but that doesn't mean they can't help the supervisor, or you, or even us, but comes time. But they have to have one person that they can go to, and I just think that the township clerk is the obvious choice.
Okay, so when we, when we discussed this office assistant position several months ago, and there was a different clerk in office, you guys were adamantly against that. They had to report to either the whole Board of Trustees, we settled on the supervisor. So had you been in the office, or spoken with the office assistant, to know that she works with the clerk more than anyone else? Where's that knowledge coming from to change it to the clerk at this point?
Well, you look at her, her job description, it's mostly under clerk's. Can you?
No, it's really not. It depends on timing.
Well, what do you want?
If taxes are out.
What is your suggestion?
My suggestion is that both of these would report to the supervisor, and anywhere you have clerk, you would add clerk, supervisor, clerk, treasurer.
I only have one boss.
No, the, they're reporting to the supervisor, but in here it says assist clerk. Assist clerk, and other trustees. Well, we're either going to say assists all trustees.
We're all trustees.
Right, but why, why are we singling, again, we're singling out the clerk in all of these, and it just seems odd that we, we were opposed to allowing the clerk to touch anything a week ago. So now we are developing new descriptions that is giving the clerk control of forty, thirty, forty, almost fifty thousand dollars worth of employee help, which I don't, not sure that we can afford. And maybe you guys have ideas for that, but A, we can't afford it, B, there are times in the year when we absolutely would never need this much help in the office. I mean, there's not going to be an election for a while.
A job description does not set powers.
It does here.
A job description does not set powers.
It doesn't, it doesn't use documents.
They can be changed anytime you want.
Right, but we're establishing something here. So if we're going to establish something, I want to establish what, what we're establishing. We, I mean, we're going to make policies that we can change any minute, but I can tell you what, that ethics policy hasn't changed, and, and there's been discussion of it. We had an attorney recommend we change the ethics policy, and we didn't change it.
Do you really want to talk about that now?
Yeah, maybe, because.
Who wrote the policy in the first place? The attorney wrote it.
Right, and then he recommended we change it, and then the board did not change it. So I don't want to set policy, or procedures, or sign off on documents that we just keep saying we're going to change. We should have a good document here that we feel good about going forward with, or we're rushing it.
It's not like we haven't been trying to get this done for over a year.
Well, then why is it look like that? Because it should be really solid at this point. It shouldn't be, well, there's hours, but we don't have to use them.
Isn't this word for word what we discussed last time, almost? Janet?
I think so, yeah.
Not two positions. You've added a whole position.
We have that position listed in our budget.
No, we don't.
Yes, we do.
No, we took it out of the budget for this year, and we put it in one line. Last year, it was in the budget, because that's how it started when Dolly came into office, when we moved into that budget year.
So are you saying we don't need an admin assistant?
We need one person.
I don't agree.
In my opinion.
My opinion, we need administrative assistant. We need consistency in terms of how we perform work for the residents. We don't have that consistency today.
Oh, we absolutely need that consistency, but, so what is the difference between having an office assistant and an administrative assistant that would provide consistency?
One's higher level work, right?
It's higher level work, there's a lot, obviously, the clerk's got a lot of work to do.
Everybody's got a lot of work to do. The clerk has the most, I definitely agree with you there.
And most of the work impacts not only our employees, but our community. And I know your work does too, in terms of getting tax, tax bills, outcomes like that, so does the clerk. So in terms of payments, in terms of making sure all the records are up to date, making sure we get the payroll on time, all those things require a lot of effort to get that done. And it requires somebody that's very familiar with the systems that we have employees, such as BS and ASO.
Correct, so what, again, so we need two people to do it, to be familiar with the systems, or we need one good, qualified person that we can pay to be consistent in how?
You always used to have two, didn't you? You didn't have two.
No.
You didn't have an administrative assistant or an office clerk?
No, Sue was the administrative assistant.
So you had one.
But when, but then there was no one else. She answered the phones, she took the bills, she did everything that this office assistant did.
Who, who was the person working in the office when I used to come in here?
That was when Dolly took over.
No, this was well, well before that.
So that was the admin.
We hired us, that's when we started to pull in the assistant, the office assistant, for a very short time, until that administrative budget went away. We were in the, in the middle, and landed with the administrative assistant not being tied to the clerk any longer, and becoming a position. And again, if you had, if you had people you've talked to, if you had data, if you had something to back up, why do you need two people? I, I would be absolutely willing to look at it, but I sit in this office, and I can tell you, that's a lot of taxpayer dollars, and the job has been getting done. So I, I mean, I would want some reasoning of why, A, why you want to answer the budget, and B, you didn't.
For one thing, just what bothers me is one line in particular, "Access federal and state grant program coordinators and township assistant, township supervisor with grant applications." It's only going to get harder.
Right, and, and you have that person.
It's only going to get harder.
That person has the same education level as your office assistant. Your administrative assistant, your office assistant, both just have to have high school graduation, yet your assessor, who is a state-certified employee, you know, state-certified person, and the state requires no college, you're requiring them to have, you would prefer a bachelor's degree. So why in the world would you have someone who's writing grants not have a bachelor's degree?
Why do you have to have a bachelor's degree to write a grant?
Why do you have to have a bachelor's degree to be an assessor?
You tell me.
We don't.
We don't.
We don't. I can tell you.
Why do you have to be a Level Three when the state requires a Level Two, MCAO? There, there's inconsistencies, there's just things put into these job descriptions.
If you want to talk about the assessor now, we can do that, we.
No, I don't mean, we don't, I'm just comparing, I'm just saying, you're, when you're looking at education, you're, you're laying these out.
Well, what do you want to change?
Everything.
I would like to make one, do this one position.
Yeah, I, I.
I don't agree.
So can you tell me this? If you're going to stay with two positions, where is this coming from out of our budget? Where is that money coming from?
The same line that it's always coming from.
There's, that money is not in this.
It's in.
Where are you getting it from?
General fund.
Fund balance money, you're going to take that away, because right now, our budget is what we bring in.
That budget is so, you know, never mind, I'm just.
Yeah.
So are you saying? Are you talking about the budget that's twenty-four percent overestimated?
Yeah.
So are you saying we don't need an office assistant, we just need one?
Yes.
And if we need one, we need an office administrator?
I would absolutely agree with that.
I don't think that's enough to bring, it's your show.
Well, we don't need any overlap, that would be the problem.
I don't like the idea not being open on Fridays. I don't like the idea closing at two o'clock. Got a whole bunch of issues.
So would other board members care to be here on Friday?
No, we usually are.
Well, it's a different question. I asked, would you care to be versus.
I'd like to see the office open five days a week. We've talked about that before.
I didn't bring my calculator, but leave your office assistant at the eighteen dollars that it's at, put your hours from nine to three, Monday through Friday, and you probably fit in your budget.
I think the budget needs to be changed. I think the budget needs to be changed, we need better, more customer service.
But you have to have somewhere to take it from, Bob. I don't disagree with you, but we only have so much money, and we are here to use it in the best way possible. And having all these extra people to do jobs that have been getting done, you know, one person helping you and I.
I get a lot of comments about...
They haven't all been getting done. That's your opinion, we just don't, I've had a lot of people, as I've visited residents and voters, that said, we're not getting it done.
Then we do better.
Well, we need to do better by getting more help in the office to do it.
Consistency, I mean, there's been turnover of what, two clerks, three office assistants?
Which is the whole point of having an office administrator. Because when you get turnover and extra, you know, duties.
But, so that's what we ask.
You need somebody that has the ability to hold the office together, to benefit the employees.
You have to pay them that fee so they stay. We've lost how many, you know, how much turnover? They were getting paid fifteen dollars an hour. You can't expect so. So the board was setting that person up for failure. And so now, let's not continue that.
I agree with you.
By trying to spread the money out. Let's put the money in, let's get one good, you know?
We're on job descriptions right now. So where in the office assistant job description are we supposed to scratch now?
The whole description, I mean, I'd like to see this...
The voting?
Voting, and the office assistant, or stage.
Any other changes in the duties and responsibilities?
I would like to see everywhere...
Let me ask this question. If we had an administrative assistant that obviously provides the continuity and the knowledge of how to operate the systems, the processes, procedures, and things like that, and if we needed an office assistant, we would have that during peak periods of time, we would hire a temporary. But we still need to have a job description.
Your job description though, would that look different?
Okay, how different should it look?
That, I would think if you're hiring someone during peak hours, they're at the front desk answering phones and greeting people, that's generally when people add...
I'm talking peak periods of time, when you have audits, when you have elections, when you have possibly with budget going together. Those are peak periods of time where you need additional help.
Though, the brunt of that, so during an audit, you and I are in charge of gathering.
I know that we're in charge.
We use the office assistant to make copies or scan the...
So you might have a temporary position for a temporary period of time to do that. And all you would do is have a job description that allows it.
I guess I would ask, Jay, that this all came about, again, you know, twenty-four hours after you took office. I would ask, without any input from anyone, or the people who are working in this, we've had that discussion before as well. So work in the office, go through a cycle, or you know, a few. Laura is trained right now, and is there to help you, and me, and Mike, but you, right now mostly, because you need help with the thing.
I do need help, that's a question I thought of.
So, so why would we upset the apple cart at this point? When that is again going to project out into the community, because we're gonna have more turnover and a bunch of people.
No, I'm not trying to upset the apple cart. I don't think you are either. I'm suggesting we need an office administrator as the number one position, and that as a secondary position, you would hire an office assistant as a reporter.
And I don't agree with that, and I'm asking we need to be in the office for a time period to see how the office works, because I don't believe that that request is based in any sort of fact, or...
And if we get an office administrator, we'll get you the data we need to put in place for temporary assistance when we have peak periods of work to get it done. And rather than come back and argue about what the office assistant would do during a peak period, we need to, if this isn't the right description, we need to create the right description for that position.
That's why we're here. What changes do you wanna make to this office assistant job description, other than scratching, voting, and elections?
I'll go back to, I would like it to read everywhere it says clerk and other trustees, I would like it to read supervisor clerk treasurer.
What about duties and responsibilities?
The ones that are on there?
Yeah, what do you wanna change?
They're fine.
So just scratch, provides voting and election support?
I think that's the only one that was, absolutely could be in there.
I think the office assistant should work.
Okay, so then the administrative assistant.
So wait a minute, on the office assistant, works under the correct supervision of whom? Where are we putting it down? Supervisor clerk treasurer?
I said supervisor, you say...
Well, I tend to be here on days, I said, how's it been working for you, Mike?
Pardon me?
I said, how's it been working for you to have the assistants, office assistant, and administrative assistants working for you?
Fine, it works for me. I mean, I try to be as well-maintained as possible, but it works.
Kind of, but most of the work, most of the...
It did, right.
It comes from me.
It comes from you, and sometimes the assessor, the tax bills.
Right.
And there's a peak periods again where we need to get additional help to an assistant. The assistant needs to do it.
So we're on the office assistant right now, right?
Right.
I said we leave it as clerk and delete the five voting.
There's nothing in there.
Works under the supervision of the clerk, is what you're asking? And responsible for performing a variety of clerical assignments and customer service? Is that what you're asking for?
Yeah.
And then, when down below on duties and responsibilities, using specialized software, BSNA, assist supervisor clerk and treasurer with administrative and financial tasks. Is that what you're asking for?
Yes, I'm asking for the document to be struck, so I guess, has there been a motion? Did someone make a motion?
Yes, she did.
I'll second the motion.
She already...
It's already happened, I just had to think back, so I missed my opportunity.
These proficiencies, okay, we had them up there before. We've discussed all those before, they should be...
Now we're on administrative assistant. Responsible for performing diverse administrative assistance and general office support. That's if we hire one. With board trustees, researchers, and responsible routine and unit management, and a wide variety of township matters supervised by the township board. Pay twenty dollars per hour, hours of work, Monday through Friday, nine to three, subject to background checks, private financial check, and nine day probationary thing.
So does this...
We take out the election, that was my motion, take out all, all, um, probation referred to elections.
Is there anything else that needs to be in there?
Um, might as well make it the same, the supervisor clerk and treasurer assist lift there. Um, that bullet's put in the middle of that.
What's it?
Okay, using specialized software, BSNA.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Make the same language.
Supervisor, what was it?
Supervisor clerk and treasurer. Any other discussion?
Just, one of the things I keep thinking, what Bobby mentioned about going through a cycle, Jay, because you're gonna learn so much in the next six months.
I'm gonna learn the next month.
No, I'm just telling you that you go through the things that you haven't faced, and I've watched, I've watched one person do that entire office. I watched another, well, actually, two people actually do that entire office, and then with the office assistant. I do believe it has to be one person, but I do believe what Bobby said is that to just get through the cycle and see...
Mike, I can tell you right now that...
Excuse me, let me finish just a second. Just that I believe that, you know, when you have that knowledge, not as, you know, looking at paper, because like I told you, we come from different worlds, you know, you're the corporate guy. And I can see where that works, but I can tell you that your experience in here is gonna be less data-driven and more anecdotal. It's, you're gonna see, you're gonna see how you learn this gig. And I'm just telling you that, well, first of all, Mike, I'm not a corporate guy, I'm an engineer. You know, I bet.
Engineers are very detailed, and I'll take that criticism if people would like to deal with it. The point is, I've already seen that there's a lot of work to be done in the amount of detail that we have to get into for payroll. Not to mention, I'm sure elections was obviously a big deal too. Harvey?
Yeah.
Three elections, okay, we have one coming up next week anyways, you know, we're gonna have a school board one.
More than likely, yeah.
So there's, I'm very familiar with detail. I'm very familiar with the degree to which an expert that knows how to run the systems and the processes, and get worked out on time, is a benefit not only to the employees here, but to the community, as well as myself. So I am one hundred percent behind putting employees in administrative system.
So you're in favor of taking thirty-one thousand dollars, and it's gonna be more once you add taxes and all the other costs that come with an employee, of the taxpayer dollars, to add an additional assistant to help get your work done? That's what you're saying?
I'm saying that, yeah, we really need to re-balance the budget to get that done.
So what is your deputy's function then? Because you have, I think, six or eight thousand dollars in the budget for the deputy to assist you in that capacity.
The deputy clerk, I thought the pay was twenty-five hundred bucks a year.
No, there's five thousand in that budget.
But it's not the six, if you were seven, you said. The deputy clerk works at my discretion in terms of what needs to be done, what I need to back up and tighten.
The deputy clerk can act in your absence at your discretion. Right now, I'm not sure who's taking minutes, that would be, could be a point of order, I can bring it up right now. The deputy is, the deputy may assist the clerk and the township board at any additional times, other than during the clerk's absence, sickness, death, or other disability, as may be agreed upon by the deputy, the clerk, and the township board. So you can't act in a capacity, unless you're acting for Jay in his absence, without this board approving that.
And the MT, MT manual, it says at my discretion, so...
No, I'm reading you from the MT, again.
I read it myself, and it says...
I can hand it to you, but anyway, so you have a five thousand dollar person?
Yeah.
You have a thirty-one thousand dollar person.
As well as you do, right?
Well, I don't know, this person is supervised by you.
You have a deputy clerk as well?
I have a deputy treasurer, and my, I don't believe that mine is five thousand. I think I have, I can tell you, I think I have one thousand, because I don't have elections or as much work as you do. So I get my job done.
First of all, I didn't set the deputy clerk's salary, that was, that has been set. So that's another discussion we can handle.
But you're asking for a thirty-one thousand dollars, that's a lot of money in a township.
Yes, it is, we're a big township with a lot of taxable values in our township. We should put our work...
Tell me where in the budget this is coming from then? That's what my concern is. Where in the budget is this coming from? Because if you said, I looked this up, and I'm gonna, you know, right here, we can cut here, we can move here, and I've got thirty-one thousand dollars, I might not be opposed to trying two people, but we're asking...
I'm not prepared to tell you that today.
Then why is this here?
Because there is a job description.
But you, so now we just approved a job description, we haven't really approved it yet, but you all just approved one, that says we have an office assistant, which we currently have, her pay will be sixteen fifty to seventeen fifty per hour, and she's gonna work from noon to four. So now, if we approve all this, and we don't hire an office administrator, we've now taken the hours that Bob wants, nine to four, Monday through Friday, and we've taken them from noon to four, based on what we're gonna adopt here.
We're trying to put hours out there to obviously service our community.
You're not trying, you did.
Yes.
So you have this person, the board has currently approved, and we have this girl, okay? At a rate of eighteen dollars an hour and thirty-two.
We have a person, we don't know if it's gonna be a female or...
Well, no, we currently have an employee in this position.
You have an office.
An office assistant?
Yes.
Okay, so this, so now we've just changed the person that currently sits at the desk to a sixteen fifty to seventeen fifty per hour job from noon to four. We haven't hired a thirty-one thousand dollar employee that's gonna cover those other hours you want.
We haven't hired anybody yet.
Yes, we have an office assistant, Bob.
I know.
No, this isn't a hiring discussion, this is a job description discussion.
We approved the job description, okay, say that goes through.
Well, let's just...
Okay, let's just pretend it goes through.
Let's make it go through.
Okay, so now it goes through. This person doesn't exist, because it's just a job description. We haven't, we did not agree to hire this person.
Then we will have another board discussion around whether we can afford to hire those positions.
Okay, so say that doesn't pass. Now you have passed a document that says our current office assistant is going to be paid a dollar fifty less than she's currently paid, and her hours are going to be cut to noon to four.
So we're talking about job descriptions, what would you like it to say for a job description? And separate agreeing on a job description from hiring an employee?
I would like you...
They're not bound together at this point in time.
I would like the fact...
The motion did not consider that. The motion was about how do we approve job descriptions?
But in your, when you're looking at that, Jay, I guess I expect, if I was called here at the last minute to be here for almost two hours now, that I would have documents that I could look at, and I could connect A, B, and C. I can't connect A, B, and C here, because if these job descriptions go through as they are typed, I will then have tomorrow, an office assistant who works noon to four.
And we keep asking you the same thing over and over. What changes do you want? What changes do you want?
One job that works from nine to three, or nine to four, and covers what you have. For an office assistant, you can change her title if you want, to office administrative assistant, and add duties, because we can, we have the ability to do that.
I'm not here to change someone's title. I'm here to ask for two different job descriptions that we would then bring back to the board and decide how to hire somebody, or how to...
Reassign.
Reassign somebody, thank you, Janet.
So you're not understanding what I'm saying?
I understand completely what you're saying.
And you're okay with it?
No, you're trying to connect two or three different things into one discussion. The motion on the table was to agree on job descriptions. If we need to change the job description, let's do that. Once we have those approved, then we'll come back to this board with who are we going to put in those positions, if anyone, if you guys.
The question goes back to the office assistant job description, excuse me. Job description is that if we pass this, tomorrow, our office assistant takes a pay cut and takes an hourly cut.
And we go right back to the question I just kept asking over and over.
What do we want?
What do you want it to say?
It's all about work.
What is...
And it doesn't work.
What does Laura make currently?
Eighteen dollars an hour, and she works nine to four, Monday through Thursday.
I would just scratch that whole line.
So let's just take that out, that whole thing, about the pay and the hours.
And you have a job description.
Okay, so you're doing the same thing over here.
Yes. That's fine, that's what we're here for. We draw out ideas, someone shows out an idea, it gets discussed, we amend it, it's done. Right.
Assessor, is that where you're at?
No, we were only talking about the office and...
And I would draw the section, because I did not include that in the pack out.
But we already have one, ain't we?
Yeah, we have one.
We already have a section on job description.
We just agree that we just did the same thing on administrative assistant? Just scratched the twenty dollars hours?
Yes, yeah.
And then take out the...
Yeah, you did it right there, we just scratched that.
Yeah.
So I will, and so the other thing is that just the two amendments, and I'm amending my motion to accept the office... the office assistant and the administrative assistant as written, except for the amendments that we talked about and have documented.
There's second.
Second.
Second?
Second.
The board, we've discussed enough, roll call please, Jay?
Okay, thank you, Mike. Kramer?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Ridley? No. Blasovit?
No.
Vance?
Yes.
Reedsmann?
Yes.
Motion passed, it's township assessor. That's just for discussion, right?
That's for discussion, and we can hold off on that if you'd like.
Why would we not hold?
We can do that, we can. I can give you the option.
Well, I'm just asking.
What I was hoping was that our current assessor could take a look. This came from the MTA.
It's not going to like anything I've ever said.
I'd just like to ask him if he wouldn't mind taking a look.
How would you amend it, Bobby, you don't need to do it here.
Yeah, I would take, there's many contracts out there that are employment contracts or, you know, a contract contract that outline, and it, it's a, again, it's a state licensed position, so the state pretty much outlines that to the T. You don't need to start adding and, and, you know, put words in and things like that, you follow what the state says.
Because we have in, I think we had in there was the associate's degree, a level three.
That's not required in a township.
That's qualifications, but I think it helps if we can all understand, better understand what the assessor is doing for the town, since we spend a lot of money on it.
Yeah, there's classes out, there's a lot of classes out there for elected officials to understand the assessor and.
There's one on the 14th of December.
Yep, yep. Okay, that was a discussion thing, was it? Likewise with the assessor assistant?
Yeah, let's go to that. Is that close?
No.
None of the above?
It's got words like appraisal throughout it, appraisers, this is an assessor, not an appraiser, there's a vast difference. It says that this person will survey residential construction, well, they're definitely not surveyors. The experience says it will have a minimum of one year of property management experience, which is home rentals, I'm not sure where that would fit in. It says they would have an assessor's board at level one, there's not such a thing.
So, is this something?
Why would this template be even in the MTA then?
This is older, that's called an MCAT now, right? MCAT.
I would think, depending on what you're reading.
Level three, level four.
Road surveys, I mean, there's, I have no clue, this is not, this is not.
And that's why it's in here.
It's covered with the name tag.
So, what do you want to do about it?
Someone needs to write a property. I mean, I don't think you'd even work from that template personally, but.
So, who can help us with that?
So, we can only ask Karen if she'd like to take that out.
Writing her own job description?
Well.
But it's not what she does anyway.
With Bobby's.
With Bobby's.
Your plate.
Yeah. If you're going to have Clayton look at that other one.
If he can look at this one, he can look at the assistant.
Okay, well, let's do that.
All right. Under personnel actions. All right, I'd like to make a motion to immediately engage a consultant to train the clerk through January 3rd, 2023, at 25 dollars an hour, not exceed 2,500 dollars.
Yeah, I would like to second that motion.
Can you tell me again then? Thanks.
What do you wish?
25 dollar dollar?
Not to excess.
Not to exceed. Through January 3rd, 2023, at 25 dollars an hour, but not to exceed 2,500 dollars. Jay seconded.
Discussion?
Discussion? Discussion? Roll call?
Okay, yes. Kramer?
Yes.
Ridley?
No.
Blasovit?
Yes.
Vance?
Yes.
Reedsmann?
Yes.
All right.
Assessing.
Ah, I got one more, Sexton.
No, she said she didn't. You drew that, didn't you?
We went through, we went through the job description because we already have one, but I'd like to make a motion that we hire a Sexton at the annual rate of 1,000 dollars per year in advertising position on the township web and Facebook pages, and for the full board to conduct interviews and make a petition on Saturday, 10:00 AM, December 3rd, 2022, as a special meeting.
Point of order, can we add something to the agenda that has already been approved at this point? Under Robert's rules of order, I don't know the answer to that.
It's personal actions, it's all in the agenda.
So, I need a second?
Yeah, I have a second, given to you, not have person performing that responsibility.
So, you seconded?
Seconded.
Discussion.
We do have a person performing that duty, the clerk and the office administrator have been doing that very well.
They're doing the function.
Doing the function, and the Sexton, so there's a three-person thing going on. And again, you know, a little more time in the office, and I think you'll feel that you fit into that role, and it runs very smoothly. I don't think, again, here's more money, we're already paying someone to do the job at an 18 dollar an hour job, and a clerk who it's under an ordinance that it's his duty. So, we don't need to add another 1,000 dollars to pay.
I don't know, you go out and look at that cemetery and.
Well, that's maintenance, that has nothing to do with.
Sexton's something, oh, oh, oh.
No, it is not, it is not under maintenance. He, our maintenance guy works for the parks, and he's only required to clean it twice a year and then mow it when needed.
Well, we've got a new clerk that can, you know, has the authority to change that. So, I say we see how that goes before we just keep throwing money out the window.
He works for a clerk.
He works for a park.
I mean, park.
Right, but the clerk, per ordinance, is the head of this, the clerk can go into the cemetery budget and say, I'm going to use.
The clerk is not charged with cemetery.
Yes, yes, the clerk is, per ordinance. We went, we had an attorney look all through this. So, with a new clerk, I think we should give the new clerk some.
I'm really unhappy with cemetery, very unhappy.
I think we need some one-on-one TLC with the cemetery, especially up here at Oak Hill.
You got problems with the building, you got problems with the roof, you got a problem with the signs, you got a problem with the fence.
And we put money into the budget to take care of that.
We.
That's who's going to organize all this.
The clerk and the office assistant.
That's not expected.
We need someone, we need someone on the ground.
If by ordinance, not by this township it is. So, we don't recognize us.
Well, I don't know if you're seeing that, if it is, then we can look at that at a later date, so maybe we table this until we figure out what the ordinance says, or.
They need a Sexton.
We do need a Sexton, we had a Sexton, but they were denied access to the information.
Point of order.
Point of order? She refused to answer.
We did have a Sexton.
But you also just said nasty things about someone, and you don't need to do that, that's what this whole thing is about.
I didn't say anything nasty.
She was denied.
Access to the information, that's a fact.
It is not a fact. It's a, it's, it could be a fact in your mind, and it's a different fact in mine, so just point of order, whatever you guys.
So, what are we doing with the motion, so?
We said table it, did you say table it?
I said we could table it, I have not tabled it yet. I still believe that we need someone on the ground telling us what we need to clean up the cemetery. Like, you agreed with it.
Yeah, my suggestion, yeah, you're right.
We need some help out there.
My suggestion is tomorrow, we examine the ordinance, and you, yeah, if, by ordinance, you are the Sexton, you're in charge of the cemetery, not Sexton. You will say this is where we need to move. How are we going to do it? If you take that.
Can you make a plan and present it to the board?
Not tomorrow, but you know, I mean, over the, for the next.
And the next convenient time, if you're convenient.
Yeah, we can make, we can make the plan, yes.
Okay, then I withdraw my motion.
And the plan will come back through the board, is that right?
Correct.
Yes.
While we're talking about, I ask.
What's that? Go ahead, ask Janet, ask me, go ahead.
Can't hear.
Oh, there's a retaining wall, it's talking about the retaining wall, it's. It needs to be fixed. It's, yeah, it's.
Do we have a retaining?
No, we don't. We're not responsible for that. I mean, if things start sliding out of the hill, we got a problem.
Look at our ordinance.
Yeah. It's families.
We'll look at the ordinance.
And we have to talk about that ordinance, because we're in a situation where we don't have enough money to maintain it in perpetuity for things like this.
So, Mike, if we're not responsible, who is responsible?
Right, now the township is, but the families are responsible for their plots. And now the families have all dissipated, they're gone, we have no, so we have this thing that's up in the air.
So, there's nobody responsible.
Well, it's township property, so we're ultimately responsible.
Township's ultimately responsible, but it's money assigned to take on the responsibility of improving and fixing it and changing.
I believe, I don't mean to interrupt the audience, but I do believe that it's the family's responsibility, we do not have money in perpetuity to take care of the cemetery.
Exactly.
Yeah.
But we do have to take care of that.
The retaining wall, yeah.
And that building and the roof.
Can we move on to audit?
Yeah.
CPA?
Uh, we're in the Sexton. I'd like to make a motion that the board approve me to attend an MTA assessing workshop, December 14th, at 100 dollars. Again, I'm just asking for approval, I don't want to do it without, but I just want to be upfront with what the money is. So, I need a second?
Hey, we'll second. All in favor?
Hi.
Wait, roll call?
Roll call?
Kramer?
Yes.
Ridley?
Yes.
Blasovit?
No.
Vance?
Yes.
Reedsmann?
Yes.
So, what's the next one?
Audit CPA?
Uh, one more, motion to direct the clerk to invite Mr. Allenberg to meet the board and answer questions.
About assessing?
Yes. I need a second.
He didn't, he did, did he make an application?
We're not talking about an application.
We're talking about.
Restate your motion now.
What?
A motion to direct the clerk to invite Mr. Allenberg to meet the board and answer questions.
What about Mr. McGovern?
What, where does Mr. Berg come in, and is there a charge for this? What, this gentleman is nothing to our township, he doesn't live here, he doesn't work here. Why would we invite?
He's an expert in his field, and I'd like to hear what he has to say.
He has a different kind of business model for assessing, and I would just like to hear what he has to say and keep all our options open.
So, we still need to have a motion and a second, so.
Your motion was to invite Allenberg?
And Clayton McGovern.
And I'll second that motion, now we can have discussion.
Will there be a charge for this, or you're just, they're going to do this out of the?
No, they're better not be, we're inviting him as a courtesy for the board to ask questions and for him to explain his business model.
Okay, and so you want us to look at a different business model? Again, the board made a motion, we spent a second round of funds to advertise for a position with the authority for Mike and I to interview candidates and bring a recommendation to the board at the December meeting. So, now you want to have.
We have time, we have time to investigate other things too, at the December meeting.
Okay, but we keep spending, again, here we go, we're spending taxpayer dollars to advertise for a position.
We're not spending that time.
It's not a time, it doesn't cost anybody.
No, 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 we have advertised for this position twice, under the board direction.
Two separate, two separate things, we obviously are advertising for an assessment. I also would like to have assessors who have done this work for years to address the board and the community in a public setting and share their knowledge of how the assessment work is done, what's required, what's important, and what, what we could, what we could need, if anything, to improve things in our.
And now you just said we again, we would like to, who's we this time?
I'm saying the board, I'm using the word we to.
Based on that motion.
To the board.
But the board didn't vote on that, so.
No, this is discussion.
Okay, but you used we, so, and Janet used we before, and it was her boss, so.
Well, it's the board.
I just want to make sure who's talking.
Good point.
Um, I guess I just, I think that would be, first of all, to invite Allenberg and Clayton, Clayton is our assessor, he's doing the job. If you want to have questions answered, I think you would ask him, as a professional courtesy, I think it would be a slap in the face to then just call in someone else unless you have a reason.
Well, Clayton McGovern, he can give us specific ideas on how to improve the existing way things are being done. He has fresh eyes on the department, and he can tell where the gaps are, and so there's specific questions for him. And then for Mr. Allenberg, I'm very interested in his business model, because it's a little bit different than what we are traditionally using, and I would like to hear what, he just, didn't he just get the contract for Petos, the city of Petoskey?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I don't, I'm not sure if he would be even interested in Petoscar, but I have talked to him.
He's not.
He's not interested?
He is not.
Okay, but I would still like to hear the business model, because it's something that we may end up having to go to in the future, and it just gives us more education.
So, this is not a job interview?
No.
No, I mean, it's not, we invite him, just.
Absolutely not.
No, there's just assessing questions.
We don't, we don't need to explore different models of assessing, we need to hire an assessor who will work for us.
We probably will do that in December, but we have time to investigate other things, and I'm just asking. I'm just asking that.
So, Mike, I just like to say something, my interest is, obviously, I'm new. I'd like to find out what assessors do and how they do it, when they do it, all the different aspects of their job. I would like to be able to benchmark what other communities do and how that could improve things in our community. Benchmarking is done all the time in business.
Right, you have two assessors in this office that work for multiple units, that you could add, you know, that would be a conversation we could have in the office.
We could have that as a public conversation between you, McGovern, and Berg, and have a difference of opinion that's appropriate, and have that discussion in public, which is the purpose of these meetings.
Right, but if there, that serves no business, I mean, this is a business meeting to make decisions about our township. If we want to have a public information meeting about assessing on a Saturday and invite those people, that would be great, but at a township meeting.
And that may be what happens.
This is a business meeting, this is.
Are you suggesting we change the motion?
You can ask if somebody contacted Allen, is he interested, you said, you said he didn't have, nobody's contacted.
I wanted to prove all the votes to happen.
We just know from the last time that he said he was lying. Interested in tax board.
If members of this board went out and did something.
Excuse me, just a minute, go ahead, Jay.
I was just going to say, excuse me, if members of this board went and did something like this on their own, then we'd be criticized for doing it. All we're trying to do is make it a public discussion, and if there's a better way to make it a public discussion, then I won't into, and I give everybody else's, your suggestion.
Well, I don't, I don't think you would be criticized, I take lunchtime classes through Frankie Schultz or MTA that are free online all the time. No one knows about it, it's not a secret, but there are classes that are offered that I can find a topic that I feel I need more education on, and I sit in on those classes.
Yes.
Janet, you know, wants to take this assessor one, there are assessor ones that are free. So, to put it out in front of the taxpayers and put it in a public meeting, I think you, we educate ourselves, that's our job.
That's what we're trying to do here.
But if we, if three of us got together, we would be violating the Open Meetings Act unless we had an acceptable agreement with this board to go do that, okay?
So, you want to do it in a group as opposed to just on here all the way around?
Yeah, we don't want to have three different discussions, we want to have a group discussion.
I don't think you would want to have three different discussions with the same board, I think it would be wise to have one discussion with the whole board present. If you don't want to come, you don't have to come.
We want the board to agree that this is worthy of having a discussion.
You're talking about a workshop, or are you talking about adding to an agenda item?
Just having a special meeting that maybe he'd be invited to.
Have a workshop.
Maybe, yeah, like an hour.
If a workshop is a better description of what we're trying to do than the board as a group, that's fine. We can amend the, amend the motion?
It just, it doesn't even have to be amended, it's just to invite Mr. Allenberg and Clayton McGovern to meet the board and answer questions, that's all it says.
Did you support that?
Yes, I did.
Roll call?
Roll call. Kramer?
Yes.
Ridley?
Microphone, microphone, please.
It's me or?
It's Kramer's microphone.
No.
Ridley's no. Uh, Blasovit?
No.
No. Vance?
Yes.
Reedsmann?
Yes.
Yes.
Do you have anything else under assessing Janet?
No.
Okay. Audit CPA?
Um, that's only there in case there's an update of the audit that you can include the rest of us in and where it is and what's going on and how we're progressing because it's getting towards the end of the audit season, if there's anything to report, I'd like to hear, if not, let's move on.
Something that I have, do you have anything?
We've got a lot, we've got a lot of things.
Budget adjustments? Budget, budget adjustments?
Budget adjustments, I'd like to make a motion to ensure compliance with the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget resolution requiring board approval for personal, personnel costs and additional capital expenditures. One, change administrative assistant to sixteen K, sixteen thousand, change the FICA to three point five thousand and change computer and office equipment to five thousand.
Point of information, please.
No, we were gonna wait.
We were gonna wait on that, we can wait on that.
We were gonna wait.
Let's table that then, all right, I resent mine.
You said Janet, point of information, I spoke with Bob this morning and I emailed you saying if there was any written information regarding the items and you have written information there that you're both aware of, that was not shared with the board. Well, he just said he was, we were gonna wait on that, he just said we were gonna wait on that.
No, what I said was you had an agreement with him, that we all agreed that he was gonna come up with the plan and we were gonna wait on it.
Right, so I'm not going to
She just offered up a bunch of adjustments.
You put all the words in my mouth that you wanted, I know what I said.
I, my point of information was that I asked for this information prior to the meeting and was told it did not exist by two board members.
You got everything that we have, everything.
She just
These are my notes, these are my notes, they're not supportive documentation for everybody else. When I make the motion, I write it down so I know what I'm saying.
But that is, that is a business matter, a budget adjustment is, is a business matter.
Well, we assumed, okay, that we'd be possibly hiring maybe an office assistant or something like that, but that got tabled.
We.
Yes, it got tabled because we discussed with the clerk that he would make a plan, so I have that ready in case we did, that's all, that's all.
So we discussed that there was, that we were maybe gonna hire someone, so we planned a budget adjustment that we just presented, but there was no documentation on it.
Kramer and I came up with the job descriptions, so of course we were going to discuss.
And then you consulted with the clerk to see if he wanted to do it tonight and we decided that we would hold off, but I just gave a budget adjustment.
No, that's not what I said.
Bobby, your point of words.
Okay, well, we'll just watch the video, that's fine, why?
I gotcha, I gotcha, I gotcha.
No, I asked for a document
You need scoreboard?
No, I don't, thank you very much.
Oh, my God.
Please.
I asked for, I asked for documentation that clearly existed and I was denied it.
You weren't denied anything because there wasn't any of that. But you, you can play your games.
That's enough, let's, let's move on, housekeeping please.
Well, yeah, we took care of it, we took consulting on it, so I'm good.
Last item, I believe, before the citizen comments is the dates and I would respectfully, just over these first three dates or these special meetings, I would respectfully ask that you postpone these meetings so after the first of the year, I have changed dates, the first three dates have had to change plans. And this is the busiest time of my year where I, I get a lot of work, I can't, I'm now, I'm feeling torn because I feel like this is important stuff, but at the same time, I have to, you know, I have to, I make my living.
Right.
And I respectfully ask if you would consider postponing them, like I said, I've had, I've had to change plans for tonight, Saturday and, I will be, I'm not sure I'm going to, and Tuesday. So that's, that was my, I would like to make a motion that somebody, that we postpone until after the first of the year. And there's any support for that?
I have support.
Okay, well, roll call please, or is there any more discussion?
There's our discussion.
Discussion. Roll call?
Well
No, there's discussions, what do you recommend?
Well, I would like to do this after the first of the year, I mean, it's no secret what I do for a living and I'm looking at dates I have to cancel.
So Saturday you wouldn't be available?
Well, Saturday, I had other, I had other plans for Saturday, ten, I had, I had other plans for Saturday. And I plan in the U P late Friday night, so.
Well, we do want to accommodate the other board members, but we do have a lot of work with them, country of excellence, I mean, we just started the first three chapters, there's ten. We have to get these going, I, I like to keep the, the momentum going, what do you think, Bob?
After the first of the year?
Can we come up with something before the holidays that we can get together at least a couple, two or three more weeks?
Tuesday.
Like, you can, you can leave the dates the way they are, I cannot, there's, I know at least two I will not make. Twenty-second, well, that twenty-second is
The Women's Club.
The Women's Club.
Yeah, you have a conflict of
You have a conflict, okay, twenty-fifth and Saturday morning, this Saturday morning.
I didn't get all of the dates into my calendar, but I have full
Are you around Saturday afternoon?
Saturday afternoon, I'll be here in town decorating Christmas in Indian River.
Oh, that's right. Not this Saturday.
Yes.
I thought it was.
Is there any way you could have one during the day?
Yes.
Sure.
That would work for me.
Sure. Take that.
I don't have a calendar, so that's
All right, but you could make two days during the day?
Sure.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, we have another, I know there's, I think there's Alzheimer's here in the afternoon. That's not funny, that's not, absolutely not funny.
I'm in Giller on Tuesday, so I
Okay.
Monday, Mom, Dad have, that's a foot, that's a
Couldn't we set them at the December meeting?
My, my feelings too is that special meetings should be for emergencies, when we need to do something, now I don't feel like this is an emergency, I know you're anxious to get it done, but I just don't feel like it's an emergency.
Well, we went through the whole agenda, this is the same agenda for all six meetings, so we've gone through it once, we're gonna go through it five more times.
I know, I'm the fix to do the township with excellence in the MBDC.
So why is that not
I'm, I'm minimal waiting till
Well, we can't do this kind of work in a
Let's, uh, let's, uh, okay, I, I sense where everybody is, we've got a motion and a second, let's have a roll call, Jay.
Okay, roll call, Kramer?
No.
Ridley?
Yes.
Yes.
Belozidit? Vance?
No.
Rizma, no.
Motion failed. Okay, uh, we'll, I will pass out, I will do what I can to be, get the ones I can be in.
That's why, but I'm, I know I
So is any time before Thanksgiving?
I'm, I'm conflicted, all the webs, Thanksgiving, our, our, one is the twenty-second, correct? Today, I can do Thanksgiving today, but I, what day are you available?
There's three days next week before Thanksgiving and I'm not, I mean, I have tax, I'm getting taxes out, I work in another township, I have family. I mean, I have tax, I'm getting taxes out, I work in another township, I have family.
Well
I will be, I'll
Generally, when we set special meetings, it's a discussion amongst five board members to set dates and work that
That's what we're trying to do.
No, you set five, you set six dates and now you just voted to not change them and help like now.
Ask at the first of the year, that's what the motion is. Because we can't do this kind of
I will, I will, if, if it pleases board, I will talk to Bobby and we will look at days that we will be in here at the same time and all that, you know. Okay.
The only way that you can change, so Saturday would have to stay, the only way you can change special meeting dates is at a meeting, you can't change them. Once they're established and noticed, you can't change them unless the board here agrees to change them.
So Mike, is that a motion that we'd like to make to come back with the set of dates?
I will, yeah, I will, I will, that's not a motion, that's just my intention for you.
Okay.
Intention for the rest of the board.
Because this board can cancel whatever means they reschedule at the Saturday meeting.
I have to travel again, work Saturday night, too. Okay, I will, I will fill the board out with the dates, have, have that up to Bobby.
Appreciate that.
Citizen comments? Yes, ma'am?
I don't know if the mic's on or not, but
You can just touch it, if the light's on, Pat, you show how to work that? Just follow it down.
I got it done.
She has no problem being heard.
Comments about the appointments to boards and commissions and task forces. For the last twenty-some years, probably many years before that, this township has survived because we've had volunteers step up to commissions. The Marina Parks Commission, the Beautification Committee, the Veterans Pier, on and on, Planning Commission, I'm on the Planning Commission now. All of these boards and commissions have been staffed with volunteers working long hard hours, years, at no pay because they wanted better things for this community. And because of that, we've got Green Box, we've got a boat launch, we've got Veterans Pier, all kinds of things in the past and we're continuing. And I'm looking at this lawn application to apply, to be on one of these commissions. And it's full of resume, your address, a person, a lot of personal information, what colors did you go to, organizations, and then at the very bottom, this is gonna be publicly available, how many people are gonna step up and volunteer in the future when you've got to go through this whole process, put your whole life's history out there on the internet for everybody to pick over? You know, I'm not embarrassed of what I've got and what I've done and I'm sure nobody else is, but, but these are volunteer positions and these are things that have made this community what it is today. And I just hope that we don't box ourselves into a position where, you know, we don't have any of those anymore, that's all I have to say.
Sir, yes, sir?
My name's Patrick McGinnis, I am issued to a higher authority, but the first thing I'd like to address is that we'd like to commend Janet Vance for her willingness to give up her Saturday to go to that meeting on our Rules of Order, while all the rest of us will be watching the Michigan Ohio State football game.
Not all of us.
Most of us. The other thing is, I'd like to once again remind the community that we are videotaping these meetings, we are putting them up on the YouTube channel, there's information on the table out there on how to find it. If you do go to the channel, subscribe, click on the bell, the notification bell, and it will tell you when a new items will, it's not just board meetings and stuff, we've got the Easter egg collection from a couple of years ago, we've got the Fourth of July parade from ten years ago, it's a little bit of history in there. The way we are doing this, when the board calls the meeting to order, the camera is going and it goes until the board's finished talking and adjournments. We take note of when the different agenda items come up. We post this agenda modified if there's modifications by the board up at the very beginning, there is a time after that agenda in the future, starting with this meeting. There'll be a time, so you can, if you have a specific topic you want to look at once again, you can scroll through quickly and find the items. But we really encourage you, if you're interested, to subscribe and click the notification bell. I can tell you right now, there are many townships in Michigan that are doing this, we are beating most of their views and I thank you for
Thank you, Pat.
Pat, we do have one question.
Could you repeat that about the notification?
Well, on, on the YouTube channel, there is a little bell, you click on the bell and
What do you mean, bell?
Like, it's a bell, an icon. You click on that and whenever a new video is posted, it sends you a notice with a link to it so you can just click on it.
Like an email?
It's there, and also the comments are open.
Are they edited?
No, there is no editing, once this video starts with the meeting, is called to order till it ends, we do not edit the comments, everything will be there. We're not here to censor anything, we're to document and people's comments are part of the documentation process. And that's the way the board will be able to get a feeling of the community's viewpoints on stuff. Hopefully no one will put bad icons up or nasty words or stuff like that, we're trying to keep it simple.
Thank you, this is what we get, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Sally?
Does Women's Club have their meeting on the twenty-second?
Looks like the person don't.
They had it.
You had your, you had it? That's on the calendar.
Yeah, we meet the fourth Tuesday very much, if I want to, carefully.
You are?
It's a yes?
Yep, that, she's
Yes.
It's a yes, okay.
Absolutely.
Public comment, please? Yes, uh, yes, sir, John?
Yeah, I made a quick comment a few minutes ago and I apologize for saying what I did, I won't repeat it to people that didn't hear.
I appreciate that, thank you, yes, Jane?
Can, can I just say, when somebody's making a comment, if they could please just stand so that we can, you know, get the comment better, or better yet, come to the podium
Yeah.
and, you know, identify yourself and put your comments so that we have a, we can record it better. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane, public comment? Comment, yes, sir?
Um, I think it is a good idea to have more help in the office, maybe I have bad timing, but it seems like every time I come up here, you're closed. Maybe it's just my timing, I don't know. Um, the other thing is, you talked about being a little more organized as a board before we come into these meetings to speed them up. I think that's a great idea, the last one I described to my wife is who's on first, just kind of all over the place. And as far as the budget for the assistant, I've looked at the township budget and I don't see how we can afford a little bit of money for helping here. I won't get into where the budget is bloated, but I've looked at the budget and there are some things that are spent in this township that are double what they are in other communities this size. Won't get into what they are, but they're extremely bloated, so for what it's worth.
Public comment? Yes, please.
I would just like to see people get along.
Yeah.
I'm so tired of, of hearing things on the computer and comments people are making about what's going on in this town and who's gonna do this, who's gonna do that and they don't know anything, I mean, I'm tired of it, I come to the meetings, I hear a lot of arguing, back and forth, misinformation. And I know a lot of us have gotten misinformation out here and I'm, I'm tired of it.
Amen.
I'd like to see something work.
Public comment? Okay, public comment is closed, board comment, please? Jay, do you have anything you want to bring?
I'll let someone else move first.
Jay?
No, not this one.
Bobby?
I'll go first, um, so on Tuesday morning, we called a special meeting in this township at ten fifteen AM to change the signature cards. That is an emergency and a time-sensitive situation in what special meetings are designed for in most cases. At that time, all five board members were in this room and had a, a meeting. Five hours or less later, there was a notice and a written request and notice by three of those five board members to set six special meetings in the future at dates and times that were not discussed. I can't believe that, that the five of us left this room that morning and it just appeared into your mind with forty-one pages of documentation to support it to, to post six special meetings without consulting the other two board members of dates and times. Mike and I can make very few of those, we expressed that concern to you and the three of you then voted down changing times so that we could be available. so that we could be available. Also, we have a room full of people that are here because they're concerned citizens. We have people who are disgruntled about how this is happening and so now we have this exact same agenda for five more meetings. It's not a workshop for the book. If that was it, I would completely understand if the next five meetings were workshops for chapters four through six and eight through 10 and it was a workshop. You put every single one of these agenda items on all six meetings. So in order for the public to have input into what's happening or to hear, because we no longer have a newspaper, they have to come to six meetings over the holidays. Now I doubt Mike and I are the only one with conflicting schedules over the holidays. Asking to move it after the holidays was not unreasonable at all. You guys have things that you want to see done and you're excited about it and that's wonderful, but if they were transparent and good things for this community, you would do it on a Tuesday night that is scheduled when people are here because special meetings with this kind of agenda, six in a row within a week, is not transparent. It screams of you're gonna wait until there's two or three people out here and then, you know, let's hire that administrative assistant. Let's fire Laura. Let's change the plea. Let's do a budget adjustment now. It may not be true, Bob, but I have never in the history of a township heard of some board within 24 hours of a change of vote. We voted three to two tonight on almost everything, put six special meetings out with the exact same agenda. It just, it goes against everything that you ran on, everything you preach from day to day and it just, I can't even explain how, I can't, there's no words for it. It really upsets me that you couldn't work with Mike and I to come up with dates and times that we could all be involved in this process, A, and B, just do it at a regular meeting so these folks know when it's happening and can be involved in your process because that's what it is, a community process. This township of excellence is based on these people. It's not based on you three. It's based on five and this, all these people here. So you just said, no, we're just gonna stick to our dates because they work for us. I think, I just, I find that really sad.
Bob, do you have anything? I would just like to say that I'm as anxious to see this completed as you are, I am, but I feel like with the limited knowledge, and people know me well enough, that probably takes me longer than the average pair to absorb things and understand them, but I just felt like it was the whole legislation by ambush and I just did not feel prepared to vote moving forward on a lot of these things. I wanted to get more time and I finished work last night. I came out about 10 o'clock and we talked about 10 o'clock because I, once I leave the office, I try not to let anything, you know, and maybe that's my shortcoming about not staying, you know, 24/7 on the job. I just feel like I was not prepared to vote on something that I really cared for. So that's my comment. Yes, go ahead.
Okay. In August, after the primary election, Mr. Riesma wrote a letter to the board asking for the board to establish a transition process. Even though he was running unopposed at the time, he didn't ask to necessarily be part of the process just for the board to begin to establish a process. He was mocked, he was ridiculed, and he was dismissed. In the September meeting, Mr. Ridley actually read the letter into the minutes, trying to infer there was something inappropriate or improper with the statements. Instead of doing the logical thing to establish a general baseline of procedures for a transition process, you ignored the obvious. This inaction was unfortunate and a huge disservice to the community. It would have been a great benefit for the future boards if we did do that. Even though you had three months to prepare, you squandered the time you had and now we are faced with organizing a new board in just a few days. You refused to be a part of the process then and literally kicked this can down the road. You created this monster and like it or not, this is what our board's transition is going to look like. A little advice? Get on board or get out of the way.
I would like to say something. I'd like to say something. Point of order?
You've got to get used to what we put up with.
Point of order?
With we?
Public comments are over.
I support the adjournment.
Okay, I would like to say something.
Now we did. You can say it. Knock it off. You said, you seconded her. We're not voting.
Do you say no vote? Well, you're going to war for that.
You just want to shut him up, right? That's what you're trying to do. You're trying to shut him up.
No, but you follow...
You are. You're trying to shut him up. You had no vote.
Point of order! Follow the rules.
You don't. You make the rules.
I wish.
And when he's done, I'm next.
Do I have? Still recording, Pat?
Well, I thought we had a motion.
I withdraw my motion. I support that.
Okay, I would just like to say that I'm proud to be the clerk in this township. What I'm not proud of is the rumors that are going around demonizing me when there's no truth to any of them. Now, it doesn't bother me, but it bothers the employees in this township, from the police to the people in the office, the employees in the office, to many others I haven't had a chance to talk to yet. So that has got to stop because I'm here to serve not only the community, but these employees and I'm gonna talk to each and every one of them and let them know who I am and that they don't have to be afraid of me based on what, point of order, please, based on what they've been fed by somebody. And I don't know who this somebody is. Could have been anybody in this room for all I know, but if you are one of those people, don't be a coward. Come up and see me. I'm available anytime. Talk.
So I heard a lot about special meeting requirements. I've been here two years. I never got a written notice at my home. I never ever got a written, I never got a notice in person, but that's okay. We'll play by those rules. We can start sending stuff registered mail if you have to have it that way. That's not a problem. We didn't make this mess. He's been mocked, laughed at, made fun of, even recently online this morning. And I don't like it. This election was not about the clerk. It was about a referendum about current township leadership, about current township governance, citizens' concerns about the status quo. Well, you know what? The citizens have spoken and they spoke loudly. I hear you. It was overwhelming, 40 points. His landslide made it clear people are demanding change and you saw tonight, there's gonna be pain. So if there's elected officials, if there's employees or committee members who can't get on board with the change, just resign and step aside. You understand? We're gonna fix it.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.